...done earlier tonight. So the next item on the agenda is the administrative review for 33 Glen Ave, Mazota Rentals.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Chismas. I'm the owner of the property at 33 Glen Ave. I've owned it for about four years now. The property is currently leased by Brooks Automation. And Brooks subleased it to a company called Infra Services. Infra Services is a telephone tower equipment service company. So they have a lot of equipment onsite, a lot of metal and so forth. They have about thirty-five, forty subcontractors that are in and out of the site frequently that work for them. And a number of projects throughout New England, and specifically from this location from Massachusetts. Their lease expires at the end of September. So it's about eleven months, something like that, left in it. And they do not have a need for the entire property and will most likely not be continuing their lease. And so the property is on the market. And I've come upon a company called Mazota Rentals, a well-known company in Connecticut, expanding, and is interested in leasing the property. And so there are some modifications that we would like to make to the property. Nothing, well, I shouldn't say nothing, that's significant. That's up to you to decide. But we'd like to do some clearing of the property so that they can store a couple of delivery trucks in the property. I think, I don't know if you have pictures of this or not, Evan? There you go, right, so. Okay. Get my bearings there. So right now, this is Glen Ave. And there is an easement road that comes in here. So this is a storage area that abuts us right now. These are condominiums. And this is not an updated map. There is, there's storage of dumpsters all along this side of the road. And this is, this area right here is paved on the site. And this area is kind of crushed gravel. And there are some trees here. I think, let me get my notes here. The distance from here to here is about eighty feet. And so right now, the distance of crushed gravel, the trees overlap this that's onsite right now are between twenty-five and thirty-five feet extending this way. This area is just contained brush and trees. So we would like to either get a, ideally, get a curb cut off Glen Ave between thirty-five and forty feet long. We can either start right along the boundary line of our property. Actually, this is the property, so can you, is there another map that has the plan that we want, Evan?
I was looking, I just brought up the two attachments, they both appeared to be the same.
Yeah, okay. Let me see if I can find it here.
Maybe this is it.
No, this one. I'll find it.
Wait, is that it?
This one right here?
Yes, yes, exactly, thank you. So, so this is, right now, existing conditions would have this road right about here. So we need to cut out in certain places, I'd say between five and ten feet additional brush and a couple of trees. And then over on this side, this is all vegetated right here. So we can either come in from the road and stop here, we need about forty feet, or we can cut from the road and leave some green out here. And we just need to be able to swing, so there's going to be no activity on this side of the property, at least no storage activity. They just need to be able to get equipment inside the building on a door that is at ground level right here. So we just need to be able to get the equipment in. There'll be some equipment, all the equipment that's outside will be stored over here. And then the rest of the equipment will be stored inside the building. So we're interested in getting a curb cut here, clearing some of this land out, and just nudging this back a little bit. And we wanted to get your, your views on that, right? So there's a storage facility here. There are dumps, this is not, this is not that accurate, but there's like, I don't know, between eight and twelve dumpsters stored on this property. Of course, we've got condominiums over here, so we have to respect them. And then there's some more storage down in here. And so I think from Evan's input, that would require a zoning change. I don't think it's allowed by Wright. And so we're here to see if we can, we can do that. I would like to be able to lease the property to them. Any questions?
Evan, do you have any additional?
I don't think it was a zoning change. This use is very much similar to the one at the end of Katrina Road, Equipment Rental. So that gives you some context. So it's, it doesn't require a zoning change. Obviously, it will require site plan change of use. It may trigger some special permits. Haven't looked that closely at the required setbacks and things of that nature. But they offered the proponent to come in, have an informal discussion. And that's, that's what's going on this evening.
So tonight, we're just informal discussion, no need for proposed use? Change or anything like that? Okay. All right. Thoughts go around the board? Questions?
You know, this almost has the feel of a seoid. You know? I don't know. I don't, I don't see any, any particular problem in this area, given what the other uses are around it.
Okay. Joel?
I don't have any questions this time.
I'm just gonna ask the property owner, mention that you would probably be seeking a curb cut on that, on, off of Glen Avenue. Is there an access there now, or is, or is the access from a different area?
Yes, so right, this is all the access right now. Actually, there's some trees down in here. So the access really starts from about here to about here. And this is all trees. Let me see if I can get a live picture here before I can show you.
Is it above?
The, the existing sites highlighted on this slide here.
Those are the existing sites. Okay.
Which one is it?
It's the one that says transferred selected site.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, so, so there, you can't stand because of the trees, but there's access about from here to about here, here. And then the tree line extends down here, so you would drive in here, right? And, and that's really the only access that the site has right now.
I mean, my, my, just five-minute impression of it, looking at it quickly, is that, you know, the intended use seems to fit with some other businesses in that area. You mentioned that other equipment company, Chadwick Baras. There's a bus, there's a school bus company that's down off of the picture. I think for me, the key would be just trying to maintain that buffer between the condo, condominium properties. But I think overall, just looking at it quickly, you know, it seems to.
We agree, so we, we, and looking at this, we can maintain about a twenty-five-foot buffer of vegetation off of the condominiums there. And actually, the condominiums are kind of up gradient from the site. In some instances, as much as twenty feet, I think. And then there's a fence there, right? So, but our, you know, we want to be good neighbors too, right? This company has a good reputation. And so we just need to cut some trees back. But we, we will be about thirty-five feet from the back of the building, which is right here. And I think the distance, let me get the site plan here. You do have the site plan, if you'd like to see it. So this is the back of the building here. These are where the condominiums are. Right here, right? And so there's a bump out here on the building, but that is still, it's either fifty or eighty feet. So there'll be probably a twenty-five to thirty-five buffer.
Well, these are, these are details we can probably work through with the plan, yeah. It's okay.
I appreciate you letting me come in. So I, so then I'd like to apply for a permit to do this. I'm not really quite sure what I need, Evan.
Yeah, I'll talk to you.
We can talk offline about that.
We're still going around the board for just questions and topics, so, Anita?
Yeah, no, I mean, I would just reiterate my concern, not my concern. I would just like to see, you know, that buffer between the condominium and the building, you know, as much as we can, you know, to shield it, like not take out too much.
You know, the other thing that we were thinking of doing is planting a line of arbivides that would grow much taller, right? So that, you know, I mean, we can anticipate that nobody wants it. But actually, the use that we propose is less disruptive than the current use onsite right now because Infra Services, as I said, has like thirty-five subcontractors. And they come and go when they want. And, you know, they don't, one of my frustrations is they don't really respect the site. So this will be an organization that belongs there and cares about the site. But I, I hear your concerns, and we will address those.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. You still have more people.
We're not done yet.
Looking at this, I mean, I have concern, looking at the picture. There is tree line all the way around this property. I mean, to the left, you have a river, or a brook. I'm not sure what's on the other side of that and what type of block's been occurring there. You don't need to, you can hold on for a moment. And just in general, when I look at the condominiums, even though they're at an upscale, there is, these are mature trees that are all around here that it looks like you'll have to cut back into. So big concerns with what, you know, what, because I don't think you could plant other trees in your space to take out how many you're going to be taking away. So like we have other projects, what, what would you do for that?
Just, these are just things to consider as you come before the planning.
So I actually was there today counting the trees that we would have to take out. I think we would have to take out between four and five trees, that's it, to get that done. Because there's, it's, when you really get into it, there's a lot of brush in there, right?
Could you go to the microphone too, please?
I'm sorry, yes. After looking at it today, I think that there's four or five trees that are significant that need to be taken down. The rest of the vegetation is very dense, and there are large trees along the abutting line.
Okay, so that's just, that's like one of my concerns when I first look at this, is the shielding.
I agree, it's mine too, right?
Marcy?
I was brought along with Saretha there, my concern was, you know, removal of the trees. How's this gonna impact the condominiums behind you? You know, the, so the pictures here, they're very shielded from this right now. If we're moving too many trees, that's gonna be right in their backyards, and they're gonna be able to see it, so.
Okay. And then the one other thing I would add is, as you get into the, the plans, I'm not sure what the interior looks like and how it could be, even if it could be reconfigured. But if that overhead door where the trucks load and unload could be on the, moved to the other side of the building, away from the residences, that might be another way of minimizing the impact of the condos as well. So just something to keep in mind if, if it's possible in the design.
Like over here?
Yeah, either one, over on that far side closest to the road, or on the other side.
Actually, the one loading door they have is approximately right here. So we're not gonna need to go all the way back here.
It looks like you have quite a few dock doors on here, though. Is that picture above not really the picture?
No, we do, we have a lot of dock doors here and here, and we will be using them. The issue is, is that we need a drive-in to get the storage equipment inside the building.
Oh, it's a drive-in door?
It's a drive-in door, right? So we would need to build a ramp here to do that. And that gets tricky, right? Because then you cut into the parking lot area, right? So there's, there's, and what I would do is I would expand the drive-in door, and I might even move it closer here so that, you know, we, we want to do as little disruption as we can. And in here, this will just be for overnight parking. There'll be no activity here during the day.
Okay.
That's what the people tell me, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your time and your willingness, I'll follow up with you, Evan.
Deirdre texted me, and she is able to attend via Zoom, so can you send her, email her the Zoom link?
We're good, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talk to you later, Evan.
All right, well, Evan is getting that done. The next item on the agenda is going to be the Chelmsford Water District Public Hearing, requesting site plan review and special permit for the aquifer protection.
Good evening.
Hello.
We were here about two weeks ago. I couldn't read that screen well, so I brought my own computer this time. I wasn't flipping my glass. I'll let Evan get all set. I'm Steve DiFrancesco with ACOM, representing the Chelmsford Water District.
Okay, I'll, I'll be right there.
Okay. I don't know if you wanted to put our presentation up. I can, I can wait.
Presentation's on, you emailed it to me, right?
Yes. So most of you probably remember, we were here two weeks ago. Applied for a waiver, that wasn't granted, so we're here for the full, full site plan review. So again, this is the Chelmsford Water District. This is for the Crooked Springs Water Treatment Plant. This is gonna be for treating PFAS in some of the wells at Crooked Springs. File number twenty-two-five-seven. And if this looks familiar, it's pretty much the same presentation that we provided the last time. So next slide, please, so. So in 2021, Crooked Springs Water Treatment Plant exceeded the state PFAS drinking water limit, and the district was placed under the, under an administrative consent order from the Department of Environmental Protection. So what we came up with was a, a treatment plant. We're gonna use granular activated carbon in large steel filters under pressure. So the, the treatment is gonna include a PFAS building, approximately sixty-two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. It's gonna be a masonry building, and the architecture is gonna come as close as we can to matching the existing treatment building that's up there at Crooked Springs. Existing Crooked Springs plant is there to treat iron and manganese. And then along with this, when we backwash these filters, we have a, we're gonna recycle the water, so none of that gets wasted. So we're gonna have an underground concrete tank, which is for the backwash water gets sent to the tank, and then gets recycled back to the head of, head of the plant to get retreated. Next slide, please. So if it would help, I can come up and point things out. But you can see the darker, the darker line work is the, is the new, the new structures, and the more lighter line work is the existing structures that are there. So the existing, the existing treatment plant is represented by that square block right in the middle, that's the existing Crooked Spring Iron and Manganese Plant. Off to the right will be the, is the proposed new treatment for, for PFAS. And off to the left is the, is the backwash, spent backwash water tank that, that I had mentioned. No new access roads around. We're using the, the roads that are right there. We're bringing the, the structures close enough so that we didn't have to build any new roads. So this, this plan represents, this was taken off the town's GAS, and we wanted to just show on this plan the distance that we, we are from the, from the existing property lines. We're really in the middle of the site. It's a very large site. So the closest we are to any property line is almost, is almost two-hundred-and-seventy-five feet, and that's the closest. Most of the other property lines were, were five to six hundred feet away from the, from the property, from any of the abutters. The, this, this slide here shows the floor plan. You can see that this, we've built this building no larger than it had to be. Those are all of the, the PFAS, I think, treatment filters filled with granular activated carbon. And we have a little backwash, some backwash pumps, a backwash tank over to the left, an electrical room, a mechanical room for, for a hot water heater and, and the boiler, and, and a small storage room. So that's, that's the layout. This is kind of a section cut right through the plant, so you can see why it's as high as it is is because those, those PFAS filters are twelve-foot diameter, and I think they're like twenty-five feet high, all filled with granular activated carbon. So that's why we actually depressed the floor down to keep the roof line down. And that's a section cut through. So some of the elements are the, the project characteristics. There's, there's no change in use. We're still treating water up at the site. As we saw from the earliest slide, the structures are not close to the property line. Everything is within the existing fence line. We're not clearing any trees. We're not bringing in any new treatment chemicals, no new access roads. Daily traffic to the site will be the same, the same staff, the same parking. Runoff from the, the two structures will be handled by underground infiltration trenches. We did turn in our, our, our stormwater permit for that. No additional site lighting, no noise. Disturbance is less than an acre. The, the building is less than the thirty-five-foot height. We've had communications with the Conservation Commission. We are impacting no resources or buffer zones to resources. Communications with the fire departments, no sprinkles were needed, and the access was acceptable. So that's the, the entire presentation. I guess in summary, this is really a benefit to the entire town. It's cleaning up, providing everyone in the town with, or everybody within the water district and all the schools with, with cleaner drinking water that will be absent, absent of PFAS, so.
Okay, thank you. We do have some departmental letters?
Yes, we do.
Okay, from the zoning, from the Building Commissioner. Dear Water District personnel, this letter serves as notice to the above-regarded PFAS treatment facility proposed development. Be advised, should this project be approved by the planning board, the building code, energy code, stretch code, and table of dimensional requirements shall be met as deemed required and/or necessary. A revised certified pot, plot plan depicting the structure and existing proposed dimensional requirements as deemed necessary. Thank you, Jose Negron, Building Commissioner. And from the DPW, this one is longer. The Engineering Department has performed a review of the site plan review application submitted for applicant Chelmsford Water District. The following contents of the submission were reviewed for appropriateness of method and accuracy, as well as for compliance with Town of Chelmsford Stormwater Bylaw, Town of Chelmsford Stormwater Management Regulations, Division Three Sewer Capacity and Connection Restriction. They reviewed both the engineering plan and the report, their site plan review comments. These are outstanding issues not addressed. During construction, care should be taken to maintain separation of at least ten feet horizontally from the edge of sewer services to the edge of water services. Where a horizontal separation of ten feet is not practical, both services can be installed closer to each other, but the water service must be eighteen inches higher than the sewer service per DEP standards. See Massachusetts Water Laws, Chapter Nine, Section nine point eight, which I imagine you're very familiar with. Snow storage locations should be depicted on the plan set, as well as signs for no storage in the existing detention basin and BNP's. Include cut and fill calculations. And if applicable, provisions for an enclosed dumpster pad and dumpster should be depicted upon the plan sets. The long-term and perpetual care of the dumpster, including the emptying and the enclosure, will be the responsibility of the property owner. Sewer comments, no increase to the Town of Chelmsford sewer and sewer infrastructure shall be more than five hundred gallons per day. The applicant should analyze sewage flow using Title V and proposed conditions to determine required sewer allocation. This should be submitted to DPW for approval for existing sewer connections. If there is a change in use or expansion, the applicant should submit necessary plans to supplement the sewer allocation calculations. Emergency power required for commercial grinder pumps. Confirm backup power and its location. And recommended stormwater management conditions. Ownership as well as O and M of all stormwater systems and BNP should be clearly stated on the plans to avoid confusion in the future regarding responsibility of the stormwater management facility. The deeds or a covenant should clearly specify the homeowner or association or property owner whom shall be responsible for owning the system, as well as inspection and maintenance schedules. It is the owner's responsibility to provide completed annual compliance records to. to the Engineering Department at 9 Alpha Road. The project's stormwater management system shall comply with the Department of Environmental Protection's stormwater management policy. And basically, they say they've met standards 1, 2, standard 3. There's a comment. One test pit shall be located in recharge area and witnessed by town representative. There shall be a minimum of four feet of separation between the bottom of infiltration trench and estimated seasonal high groundwater level. The stormwater 4, which is the 80% TSS removal, the standard is met. Average annual pollutant removal requirement to be achieved by retaining the volume of runoff equivalent to or greater than 1 inch multiplied by the total post-construction impervious surface area on the new development site. And standard 5, high pollutant potential, potential pollutant loads, the standard is met. Standard 6, critical areas is met. Standard 7, redevelopment project, standard is met because the project's not considered redevelopment. Stormwater standard 8, erosion and sediment control, standard met. Ensure that filter type soil erosion and sediment control are properly located for effectiveness throughout construction activities. Location should follow contours of the site and should retain sediment prior to flowing to major conduit of stormwater, such as paved impervious services. Standard 9, operation and maintenance is met. Illicit discharge, standard 10 is met. A signed illicit discharge complaint statement must be submitted prior to the discharge of any stormwater runoff to the post-concussion, post-construction BNP's. And then there's a series of recommended general conditions for approval. I'll, I won't read those unless it's specifically desired. And one more, and that's the Fire Department. Dear members of the Board, the Fire Prevention Office respectfully submits the following comments and conditions for your consideration regarding the proposed water treatment plant at 50 Doak Drive. Code compliance, all construction shall comply with applicable codes and regulations, including but not limited to the Massachusetts State Building Code 780 CMR, applicable Massachusetts CMRs, Massachusetts General Laws, relevant NFPA standards, and the Town of Chelmsford bylaws. This office has reviewed the project plans as part of the building permitting processes. Knox box keys to be provided on completion of the project for access to the facility. Knox box keyed to Chelmsford Fire Department specifications to be installed in coordination with this office for the location. We respectfully request this letter and the outlined conditions be incorporated into the planning board's decision and entered into the public record. Sincerely, Josh Abbott, Chelmsford Fire Department. And that is, the rest are no comments from, scrolling down too far. No comments from Conservation Commission, nor from the Board of Health, nor from the Treasurer Collector. And that's it. Thank you. Evan, any additional?
I would just suggest that many or some of the DPW, what they labeled as outstanding could likely be handled as a condition of approval. I know the applicant has some clarification on a couple of them. I only say that within the context of the time sensitivity that the applicant's expressed.
Yeah, my, I would agree with most of them, except for the test pit, potentially. But let's go around the board and get thoughts and questions first. Mike, we'll start with you.
Nothing here, it seems pretty straightforward.
Okay. Joel?
Yeah, the DPW requested, they said one test pit, but I think it was a little ambiguous whether they meant each infiltration trench. But I would request that you do a test pit at least in each infiltration area, because that's, that's the stormwater standard. My feeling as to whether that needs to be done beforehand or not, it seems that you have a certain amount of room there for location of the trenches if you do encounter problems like ledge or something like that. So in this case, and because it's the Water District performing a public function, I'm almost, I'm inclined to be willing to make that a part of the condition, but only because of those special conditions ordinarily, I would not.
Okay. John?
I don't have any questions at this time after reviewing all of the items that have been presented.
Okay. Anita? Sarita?
I always do. Can you go to the drawing and can you point out to me where the parking spaces are right now?
Yeah.
Can you bring up your full site plan?
Okay, you could, you could use the presentation, too.
I think it, there was one link that gave all the drawings. I don't know if it's in that one.
Yeah, there's one that's the site plan.
Brandon, where are all the parking spaces now?
Right in front.
Right in the front? Okay.
Can you maybe bring up this one, Evan? I don't know where that one is. It was in one of the links.
But that was the cover, I think you're looking at the cover sheet there.
Yeah, the site plans.
Yep.
This one here?
Uh, second one down.
Yes, second one. Yep.
You can see all the cars on this thing.
Yep. All the parking for the treatment plant is right there.
So if they need to go to the other buildings and move any type of heavy equipment or anything, where would they put their vehicle?
Right there.
And they'd walk?
Yes, it's not very far.
What about the other piece that you're building?
This piece right here?
Yep.
That's, that's a below-grade, that's a below-grade concrete structure. So if they needed to do any work there, I'm sure they'd just pull a pickup truck right up on the road next to it and work on that.
So I think, when we met last time, I think we asked about parking at the space and also where were they going to do their snow storage, I thought, when you came in last time.
That was the solar farm.
Wasn't that one?
Yeah, that was a different project.
Does this one need parking at the building?
I don't think so.
There won't be any more operators than, treatment plant operators that are there now. So they'll park where they usually park, do the work in the, in the main facility, and then just walk over to the, to the other facility. It's, I think it's probably 100 feet.
Okay, and then on these plans right now, there's no snow storage?
Well, we're not adding any, any access roads. So wherever they're, whatever they're doing for snow removal now, they're going to, they're going to continue to do that. There's nothing.
I thought that was in one of the DPW things.
Yeah, so that's, that's going to be one of the conditions, I think, is that the plans, and the plans include the snow storage locations because of the BNP's. The addition of the BNP's, we want to make sure that there's no snow storage on the BNP's. And so the plans will need to have snow storage locations, signs for no snow storage. And then we typically also ask that be added to the O&amp;M plan as well.
Okay, I agree with that. And then I think it also mentioned something about the dumpsters. Do you guys have a dumpster there now?
There's a dumpster there now, and...
And where is it?
Where is that now?
Right next to it.
Yeah.
And this, this facility will not be generating any additional trash.
It's a dumpster.
Okay. So I guess, so I guess I agree with all the stuff that we said, like that you said, for the multiple pits and also the conditions of all those things being met.
Okay. Marcy?
No questions.
Thank you.
All right. So yeah, so I guess, I think if people are okay, we can look at those more as special conditions that we could add to the decision. All right, since this is a public hearing, I will open it up to the public for comment, if there is anyone. All right. So before we close the public hearing, let's discuss the special conditions. So it sounds like really the big special conditions would be more on the DPW letter. The test pits at each of the BMP locations, or the infiltration locations, the snow storage locations on the plans, and locations of the signs for no snow storage, also on the plans. And then also adding to the O&amp;M, the, that same map, and, yeah, the same map for where the plows can put the snow storage and not... Is there anything else I missed?
We talked about the OEM.
The O&amp;M, yep.
O&amp;M. Was there anything else within their items that we missed?
Don't think I saw any.
Okay.
There was one comment on, I think, a few of the letters about meeting building codes. And our full set of drawings has a whole building code sheet on it, which, which tells what energy codes we, we were, were meeting and what building code. So that, that's all on there.
Yeah. And typically, Jose won't sign off on it until that's there anyway, so I'm not too worried about that one. Is there anything that people see we missed? Evan, do you see anything?
No, the decision will reference the compliance with the letter.
But I did want to call out those specific ones. Are those special conditions okay with you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Moved by Mike.
Second.
Second by Sarita. All in, actually, do we have Deirdre on?
No, she dropped off.
She did drop off, okay. So Sarita, you're voting on this one? So all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Approved with those special conditions.
No, we just closed the public.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, that was just to close, right?
Sorry. Anywhere copy.
Motion to approve the site plan.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Sarita. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And also, is there a special permit that we need to approve? We just approved the site.
Yes. And so, well, do we typically vote separately for the special permit?
You don't need to.
But we specifically, but Chris's motion specifically cited the site plan.
Yeah, I think based upon the more detailed information, it sounds like there's no additional impervious. If that's the case, then they technically wouldn't need the aquifer law coverage because they're not increasing law.
Right.
Actually, they are, because they're adding the buildings. So yeah, they are. So let's just vote on those special permits.
Move that we approve a special permit for, what was it again?
Aquifer protection.
Aquifer protection.
Okay, special permit, motion by Mike.
Nice second.
Second by Sarita. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous for the special permit. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I just want to add that I was happy to see that you named the drive after Bob Doak, because he was a real asset to this community for his service as a superintendent. An excellent, wonderful person, so I was very happy to see that.
All right, moving on. 191, 195 Riverneck Road. Public hearing continued. Evan, can you let me know when Deirdre rejoins?
Wait, because when she comes on, I can't vote.
I'll let you know, man. It's been, it's been a while. She jumped on.
I figured.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Good to see you again. Carrie Pike with Howard Stein Hudson on behalf of Commonwealth Utilities, Construction Utilities, sorry. I have some updates for you related to the transportation analysis. We received the peer review from your consultant, and as a result of that, we prepared some additional information. So I have a few slides, and then we can go from there. So just a reminder on the site plan here. I mostly just put this in for reference in case we need it. I find it's occasionally helpful. Next one, please, Evan. So the comments that we got, I'm going to give you kind of an overview, were to revise our no-build condition to include the vacancies at 199 and 201 Riverneck Road. So we did that based on direction from Evan and from your consultant, Jeff Dirk. And we revised the analysis to reflect that. We also revised the analysis to reflect the slightly smaller program that is currently proposed compared to the original TIS. So those effectively resulted in no, no effective change in the, in, in the impact of the project. Now, I'll talk about that a little more in a minute. But the, I think the bigger things that we did, your consultant asked that we get crash data from the Chelmsford Police Department, because Mass DOT's data only covers what they call the last closed year, which means they've verified the locations of the crashes and this sort of thing that they get from the police departments through 2021. So we did get data from the Chelmsford Police Department, and using that and the MassDOT data, we prepared a crash diagram. So I'm going to show you that in a minute. And then we also identified potential safety improvements at the intersection of Riverneck Road and Carlisle Street. Next, please. So here's the collision diagram for Riverneck Road and Carlisle Street. So you can see, Riverneck Road is running across the page, left to right, and Carlisle is running up and down. And you can see each crash is the pair of arrows. They're numbered. I did not include the, the data, but the data was in the report that we provided to the town, the updated report. But each of those crashes, you can see there are a lot of arrows that are kind of at right angles to one another. That means that basically two cars traveling in opposite directions hit each other in some fashion or another. And we did have one pedestrian crash as well. So clearly, we have an issue with those, what we call angle crashes. And so using that data, we developed a plan for improvements at this location. Your consultant did specify that those be limited to what we call lines and signs, so pavement markings and signing. So if you can go to the next one, please, Evan. So again, same orientation, Riverneck Road is running across the page and Carlisle up and down. And one of the things that we noticed is that there are no stop lines on Riverneck Road. There are stop signs, but there are no lines to tell you where to stop. And so that's one improvement we proposed, to put both the line and the stop word on the pavement, so a car knows where to stop and how far forward to stop, but also to reinforce that the crossing traffic on Riverneck Road is supposed to stop, because it did seem that there was a lot of failure to yield in the details of the crash reports. Then the other enhancement here, we did propose to install the crosswalk. There are ramps on the east side of Riverneck Road, so installing the crosswalk to match up with those ramps. As I mentioned, we did have one pedestrian crash here. It was an injury crash, not a fatality, but nevertheless. And then the last thing would be to install LED flashing stop signs. So basically, this is a sign that has a solar panel-powered edge that flashes. So again, it's reinforcing to traffic, you're supposed to stop on Riverneck Road. And so you can see kind of what those look like. And then underneath that would be augmented a panel that says crossing traffic, cross-traffic does not stop. Just to, again, reinforce to the folks on Riverneck that they are supposed to be stopping for traffic on Carlisle. So those are the proposed improvements at this location. And if you could keep going. And then I think this, we did provide this the last time, but I just wanted to remind everyone, the project, since we prepared the traffic impact study, did get a little bit smaller, and so these numbers were in the last presentation I gave you as well, but you can see just a slight reduction in the overall trips, about seven in the morning and eight in the afternoon. And that's, those trips are based on ITE, so as I mentioned before, those are actually conservative compared to the two sites we did count to look at what the trip generation would be for these types of uses. But we felt it was appropriate to go with the more conservative numbers for the analysis. So again, the, the trip generation is a little bit less, minimal impact overall to the surrounding network. And I'm, this is a very broad statement, and I know Jeff Dirk is on, so I'll let him give his overview. We did receive his comment letter back just, I don't remember if it was yesterday, the day before, telling us that I think generally speaking, he was satisfied with our responses. But I will, again, I know he's here to tell you in his own words. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to hear from the peer reviewer next?
Jeff, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa Associates, the board's transportation peer review consultant. So I think the applicant's representative provided a good overview, kind of where we are at with respect to the peer review. Just kind of going back, but not too far in terms of the review itself. We have issued actually three letters. Two of them came in recently. So the first letter was an overall review of the transportation assessment, but also the site plan. And as we're reviewing the site plan, it's really for access, circulation, parking, and general circulation for pedestrians and bicycles within the project site itself. So we have comments related to the site plan as well as the transportation study. Focusing on the transportation study, I think it's accurate to say that all of our comments have been addressed. And what you'll see in the most recent review letter we've issued is really just some suggestions for consideration by the board at the appropriate time for conditions. I think as Carrie went through what our major comments were on the initial study, they primarily focused on safety. The Carlisle Road intersection with Riverneck Road was a location that was identified to have a disproportionate number of crashes happening. Most of them were property damage only, but the number of crashes that occur at that intersection are disproportionate to the amount of traffic that's going through the intersection. So we would expect less crashes to be happening than is actually occurring at the intersection. So that's why we've asked for that additional analysis, which was just gone through with you, which we think provides some very good information to the town and us as transportation professionals in terms of looking at what's happening at the intersection. And I think importantly, to develop remedial measures, and that's what's been presented to you tonight. One of you will see is one of our suggestions is that those improvements be a condition of the approval of the project. They are, as was characterized, signs and markings. We did ask that in addition to the signs and markings, that some vegetation clearing happen in the, I believe it's the northeast and northwest corners. So those are the corners like on the side of Carlisle Road and the Boston, I guess it's Boston Road as you head toward 495. As you look at that collision diagram, it is accurate to say that a lot of this is failure to yield. But the other thing that you see is that the majority of the crashes are in an eastbound motorist on Riverneck Road being struck by a southbound motorist on Carlisle Road or coming over the bridge from 495. And I know you're probably all very familiar with the intersection, but the northwest and northeast corners of the intersection do have some vegetation in those areas. So we've just suggested as well that some trimming happened within the public right-of-way just to clear the sightlines in that direction. So as a motorist is coming over the bridge, they'll be able to see a vehicle that's maybe in the intersection crossing from one side of Riverneck Road to the other side. So we just asked that that be included as an enhancement to the markings and signs that you've seen. It's a very wide intersection as well, and so that's why I think that that crossing distance from one side of Riverneck Road to the other side catches people in the middle of the intersection. And so I think that's another thing, these signs and markings will help with that because it's moving the stop lines closer on the Riverneck Road approaches, closer to Carlisle Road, which puts better sightlines essentially for everyone at the intersection. So again, we had suggested that that be a condition of the approval of the project. As we looked at the impacts of the project, I think the important thing was including the vacant space at 199, 201, which the applicant has done. Obviously, that building reoccupied will generate traffic, and so we want to make sure that that's accounted for as we're looking at the impacts of the project. I believe in working with Evan, it was identified that there's about 123,000 square foot of space, a little less than that, in that building that's vacant. So the applicant is basically backfill traffic associated with that building being fully occupied, which is appropriate when we're looking at what the impact of the project may be. Now, I know what was said is that the project is a minimal impact or a minor impact at the intersections, and that characterization is correct. But I think the caution that was noted was it doesn't mean that traffic is free-flowing, especially Carlisle Road. The Riverneck Road approach to Carlisle Road heading in the eastbound direction, so from the site hitting toward the Lowell area or in that direction. That approach is operating at or over capacity. The project is a very minor impact on that approach during those conditions. When it's probably on the order of less than 20 seconds during the peak hour, increase in vehicle queue of about one vehicle. So that's a location that does have some capacity constraints, but the project's impact is relatively minor. The same can be said for the Riverneck Road approach to Billerica Road. Now, that approach is, the left turn movements are operating over capacity during both peak periods. The project's impact on that approach, it's adding about somewhere between 30 to 35 vehicles during the peak hour. So it's one additional vehicle every two minutes during that peak time period. What that translated into in terms of impacts is an increase in queuing of about one to two vehicles. So what was estimated is the queuing is about seven vehicles today with the project, full occupancy of the vacant space adjacent to the project site. That queue would probably go up by about one to two vehicles, so seven to nine vehicles. So we go from seven to up to nine vehicles in queue there. The applicant also did undertake an analysis to see if a traffic signal is justified or warranted at the intersection. It is not. So it's not an appropriate traffic control measure. Traffic's being processed. It's just being processed at a slower rate, meaning that there's queuing. But the project's impact in queuing is not significant. So again, by way of a summary, the applicant has addressed all of our comments. The project will produce minor impacts, as I've noted, about one to two vehicles in queue. Delays going up on the average of about 20 seconds at any one movement at the intersections they've evaluated. We did recommend some conditions of approval, which you'll see in our letter that deal with the intersection improvements. Carlisle Road, sightline maintenance at the driveway, so making sure that the sightlines are clear. The sightlines are appropriate, but we want to make sure no signs or landscaping are placed in those areas. And then lastly, and I think this is pretty consistent with the reviews that we've done for projects along Riverneck Road. This area is lacking in sidewalks. In fact, basically, the segment from the site all the way down to just about where the cemetery area is lacking in sidewalks. And so it would be desirable at some point to have sidewalks along the road. So we continue to recommend that these projects contribute to future installation of a sidewalk. So there is a sidewalk on the south side, so opposite the project site, just the north. It starts at, I think, 154 Riverneck Road and then travels toward Carlisle Road or to the bridge for the Route 3, the ramps on 495 to Route 3. But there's no other sidewalks, and so we've suggested the applicant make a contribution towards sidewalks, which they've agreed to do. It may be something that you'd want to get an estimate from your engineering department for a segment of sidewalk in this area. And then the applicant would make what we call a fair share contribution. We did provide some guidance that the project's impact in terms of increased traffic on Riverneck Road is about 16% over existing conditions on average. And so as you're looking at a potential cost for a sidewalk segment, we would suggest that the fair share contribution would be 16% of whatever that cost happens to be. And that's something that, again, we've suggested be a condition of the project. So our comments related to the transportation study have been addressed. Our comments related to the site plan, we did provide some comments asking that some sidewalks be provided internal to the site, that those sidewalks extend to Riverneck Road for future connection to a sidewalk, as well as some parking enhancements within the site. Those have been addressed. The outstanding comments we have related to the site plan deal with vehicle circulation. So the first is the type of use that's here. So this is a contractor's storage facility. We do know that the utility company up in the back end or to the north end of the site, they do have accommodations for parking trailers. There'll be equipment storage, things like that. So we did ask that the applicant provide an analysis of vehicle turning for basically a truck towing a trailer. So they did provide that analysis. As we looked at that analysis and focusing on the driveway, there's an area on the, I believe it's the east, west, I'm sorry, the west side of the driveway where the truck would actually off tracks over the curb. And so we've asked that they increase the corner radius so that that does not happen, given the fact that that's probably going to be a regular user going in and out of the site. And so we want to make sure that that, the curbing doesn't fail within the public right-of-way, so we've asked that they do that. The second thing relates to the fire truck. So as they've run the turning analysis for the fire truck, they've ensured that the fire truck does not cross the center line on Riverneck Road when it enters or exits the site. As the vehicle is exiting the site and turning to the right, we did note that the aerial portion of the apparatus, so the portion of the ladder or the basket that hangs over the front of the cab, that will actually swing beyond the curb line. So the tires and the bumper stay within the curb line, but the aerial portion that overhangs the front of the truck will swing beyond the curb line. So we've asked that the applicant verify that there's no structures or objects that would exceed seven feet in height within that swing area. As we looked at the site plan and especially the illumination plan, it does look like there's a light pole in that area. So that may need to get adjusted, but we want the applicant just to verify and make whatever refinements are necessary. So that concludes our review. As I said, Mr. Chairman, they've addressed the comments pertaining to the traffic study. We provided some suggested conditions of approval. There are some minor adjustments to the site plan that still need to be made, but none of those would affect the building or parking layout. So happy to answer the questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Evan, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. Before we get to questions, I just want to make sure, are you guys able to address the issues on the site plan that they raised?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. Katie Unright from Howard Stein Hudson. Yeah, we addressed some of the comments, or we addressed the comments from the previous letter. We got some new comments back. Yeah, they're very minor in nature. Be happy to address them.
Okay, thanks. All right. So at this point, I'll take it around the board for questions pertaining to the traffic studies. Questions, comments? Marcy?
Unright at the moment.
Sarita?
Nothing. I did notice the electric parking he had mentioned. I didn't hear a comment on that. I'm not sure.
Okay. Yeah, I did note that that is one ask, that they're suggesting more electric parking be included. Anita?
No comments at this moment.
John?
No, no questions at this time.
We have the data.
I'm surprised no one's got questions or comments.
Jeff was very thorough.
I did. I've got some questions and comments.
Right.
But I'm not the only one.
No, I know.
But usually I hit them all.
I try to read the reports on the phone.
Go first.
I think for most projects on Riverneck Road, I'm not very concerned with the increase in volume. I think most projects with that road is, to me, volume's not the concern. To me, the number one concern is safety. One of the things I've noticed that it would be good to see if could be addressed in the study or the peer review is the safety along the Riverneck Road in terms of the heavy trucks. Like you said, there are no sidewalks in most of Riverneck. It's a windy road. Heavy trucks are being shown to go across the center line in most of those turns. And so it'd be good to see what the increased number of heavy trucks on that road is going to do to pedestrian safety with or without a sidewalk. We've got a number of school bus stops along the road, too, that are pretty well planned out by the school department. So it'd be good to see where those school bus stops are related to blind corners and things like that. One of the things that I noticed on my drive along Riverneck Road this past week is that most of the houses in both directions have mailboxes across the street. So you've got people crossing the street to get to their mailboxes on a daily basis on very windy roads with potentially an increase in heavy trucks. So it'd be good to see what that impact would be as well.
Have you heard in wider trucks?
Yeah, heavier and wider.
They're wider than cars, and that's the issue here.
The other concern I have is that intersection at Riverneck and Carlisle, I don't think the sightlines for where the stop location is and the brush is the issue. My experience in that intersection with myself and with my new driving daughter is that hill where the bridge is. That is a blind hill, and no matter how good of a view you have of that area, you're not going to see a car until it's over that bridge. And my concern is if a car is coming over that bridge and you've got a heavy truck coming out of that intersection, there's going to be an increase in accidents. So it'd be good to see if maybe a light would be a good idea with an increased number of heavy trucks in that area.
If I could address that, the volume in there will not meet the warrants for a traffic signal. We didn't look at a four-way stop. I don't know if that would be something that you would even want to consider, but...
People won't stop. People won't even see the stop sign.
You can't see it. Like, you literally, the way, because me and Chris and John, all the three of us, all live in that. And even tonight, when it's, we finish this meeting, the way you have to go into that intersection from Riverneck Road through Carlisle, because I have to go across, is you stop and then you inch forward slowly until you're in the middle of the road so you can see, and then you go real fast to go across. That's how you do it, and I've been doing it for 55 years.
And I have noticed there's a now traffic light on the other side because of the detour. That's a safer intersection now because you've got the same blind hill coming over. So it's, to me, it's not about volume because I'm coming out of that neighborhood, and that neighborhood's maybe one, two cars every few hours, if that. It's about the safety of that intersection as opposed to the volume.
Yeah, understood. We use the crash warrant so infrequently. I think the number is five crashes a year. Jeff, can you confirm that? I don't think we have that here, is my recollection on the yearly data. Give me a second to...
My daughter started driving in May, and we've had two near misses already.
Oh, dear. I'm so sorry. I would not want to be a young person learning to drive in the way driving is now. So I'm not sure we would meet the crash history warrant either. I also do want to say that this should not be on the applicant solely to solve either. So give me a minute and I'll look up those numbers for you.
So those would be my comments related to the safety of Riverneck Road as opposed to the volume. Because I think, like I said, most of these projects are not going to increase the volume tremendously. It's really about the safety aspects of Riverneck Road. So those are my comments.
I just have a quick add. Those LED stoplights that they have, do butters ever complain, like the people that have those corners complain of the lights going in their houses?
Yep.
Yeah, because that seems like an issue.
Yep, in these houses, like, there's not a lot of, it's East Chelmsford, there's not a lot of frontage on.
Yeah.
They don't have a lot of frontage versus, like, you know, other areas in town, so...
There's no way to shield those things either from the house.
No.
All right. Any other questions or comments related to traffic?
No, you know, I've mentioned it earlier, like, the street is so narrow. And we've run into this before with trucks being proposed on this road. The fact that we don't have sidewalks makes it very difficult to approve any business that is going to be putting a significant increase of trucks on the road. And I know that's not this applicant's responsibility to put the sidewalks on the street. But at some point, we, if, like, if we want to start entertaining these businesses in this area, like, we need sidewalks here. Otherwise, it is not safe for these children.
Or adults.
Or adults, but like, again, I'm on the street five times a day easily. And I know, like, I know where all the bus stops are. My kids are on these buses. It's been 55 years. The bus stops have not changed. And I'm careful.
With the size of the vehicles going through there, is there any spots in that road that are narrow that actually can't accommodate?
Oh, yeah.
Side by side. So is that something they reviewed?
No.
So if they could, I mean, that would be interesting to see. If there's any spots in the road that's like a pinch point where two extra-large vehicles would have a problem passing each other?
And it would likely be on the turns.
On the turns. It's right in front of, this is 199. It's the one, the property that, it's empty, that they want to build the 40B?
243.
What is it?
240.
240, yeah. That area is, like, from that down to Riverneck, to...
Yeah, St. Joseph's.
Yeah, no, not even there, too. But I think it's particularly narrow from, like, 240 coming down into the center of town, like, those, that curve right there.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? All right.
The St. Joseph turn there, too.
That one's a tough turn, yeah.
That's a tough turn, too.
Are there any other comments or questions related to the site plan review from the peer review? So one of the things that I noticed as part, looking back at the site plans related to the reconfiguration of the entry, I noticed that the curbs are the Cape Cod berms. One of the things, because it's heavy machinery, it'd be good to get those as granite curbing throughout the site. That's something, that's something that I typically ask for on some of these higher usage areas. Even if it's sloped granite for the fire trucks, it would be good to make sure that that is a strong material for plowing and making sure that the snow stays within the boundaries, because this is going to be a hump site. Are there any other comments on the site plan? I noticed, well, we'll get to the site plan topic after. So if there are no more questions on the peer review for the traffic, so I think, Jeff, if you could potentially address those questions that I had and see if we can get some feedback on that?
Absolutely. I've made notes of all of the comments that you provided and the board members provided.
Okay, thank you. So I think if there's nothing left for the peer review on the traffic, I think we can let him go and then continue on with other questions and comments on the site plan. All right. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Are there any other comments or questions on the site plan itself or the project? I think, is the DPW letter a new one?
No, we did not send, we did not ask for new technical comments.
Okay.
Understanding that tonight's was primarily focused on traffic.
Yeah, I just didn't, I just saw the letter and I didn't know if we needed to read it into... Okay. All right. Before I open it up for the public, are there any other questions, comments?
Not at this time.
Okay. Since it's a public hearing, I will open it up to the public for questions and comments. All right. Are there any other topics that you guys would like to discuss tonight? Yep.
I did just want to get back to you on the crash numbers. There is only one year that we had five crashes, and that was 2019. The most recent couple of years have had no crashes. It's not to say there were not near misses, as you all were talking about. And as someone who has also driven through that area, I do exactly what Anita described, which is inch forward and then jam it.
Gun it. I'm curious what the crash data's going to look like over the next, this year and next year with the increase in traffic for the detour.
Yeah.
So that'll be interesting to see.
So that's how I taught my two teenagers to get through there, because that's how they have to get to work.
Do you need to review Chris Graham's letter at all? Does that look like that was a new one?
That's a resident.
A resident, okay.
Yeah.
If they're not here.
All right. So I just had one other comment on the site plan. It looked like the updated site plans that I was looking at recently decreased the amount of snow storage since the last one.
And I think we asked for what percentage they were doing for snow storage. I don't think they ever answered that.
Okay.
I don't believe that the areas were decreased. I think we re-looked at the areas, but I can give you a square footage area that we have shown on the plan for the next meeting.
Okay, that'd be good. Thank you. The one concern I have, because this is a hump or luple, however you pronounce it, site with the fleet storage, my concern with putting snow storage into the permeable areas is that it's potentially untreated snow going into the ground. So if there's a way of moving the snow into more permeable areas that can be funneling the snow...
Impermeable.
Impermeable, that can funnel the snow into more treated avenues, that'd be better, I think.
Yeah, we can move it onto paved areas if that's, sure.
I think for this one, it'd be better.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all.
Thoughts on that, Joel?
I agree.
Has the, has the parpan updated where it showed the gravel area not being as permeable?
But that's all pavement now.
Yes, that's not paved.
Okay.
Yep. And so the calculations changed very minorly, because we had used a coverage of 96, and it just went to a 98 for the curve number for the, for the volume of water coming off of that. So it's all been updated to pavement.
Okay. All right. So at this point, I think we'll, I'll entertain a motion to continue. Before you do, our next meeting is October 22nd, and we've already got a couple hearings at that time, and that's also Town Meeting Week. So I'm wondering if we can continue this to November 12th?
Mr. Chairman, my clients are under a deadline for completing their permitting in order to purchase the property, so we'd ask for whatever you can do to get us here sooner than that.
Okay. Evan, how confident are we that we'll actually get Stedman Street?
Very confident.
Okay. And then Princeton is also on the 22nd?
It is. I don't have a level of confidence on that one, but...
No, we absolutely will be here.
Yeah, we'll be here.
Princeton, yeah. We are ready to come tonight, so.
All right. All right. Do we have any new ones coming in, Evan, that you can think of?
Yeah, 10 independents, 15 residential units, and then a minor site plan for 15 research plays.
It's going to be too full.
That's going to be a packed meeting.
If someone drops out, maybe we hear of someone dropping out.
I don't think any of these will be dropping out.
Swap your other project.
Of all of these, the landfill's probably going to take the most amount of time, just because of the peer review presentation. 10 independents, you've already heard the SEOD applicability, so. 15 research plays, you've already seen. This is a kind of a minor modification to your approval. And 133, I think the primary purpose of that meeting was to hear from the property owner contractor.
You're still covering a lot.
That's a lot, and it's Town Meeting Week.
Well, Mr. Chairman, unless it turns out otherwise, we weren't expecting to take a significant amount of your time with regard to 133. We are bringing in the landowner and his development team to provide you the information you've asked for. And with respect to this potential hearing, it's our position that what we need to do between now and that next hearing is to provide you the updated site plan, which will reflect the comments and suggestions by Mr. Dirk and from the board here today. My engineer has assured me that those are simple and easily added to the plan. We are not going to suggest otherwise. We're going to accept all of those changes and comments that you've provided us. Personally, I'm of the mindset that we have done a good job in addressing traffic. And so quite frankly, that next meeting, I would hope to be a fairly short order. We will present the site plan, which we will provide to you a couple of weeks before the meeting. And, you know, we're going to come in, give you a quick overview on those changes, and respectfully ask that you consider a decision on this project. So I don't expect this to take a lot of time. And again, you know, my clients are under legal obligation, and I'd really ask for your consideration for that. It's, we're in a tough spot right now.
All right. We would also be needing Jeff's information, too. So let's schedule it for the 22nd. And if we can't get Jeff's information and feedback before then, we'll have to, we'll have to continue it.
Understood.
But we'll try.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, so.
22nd.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Marcy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
What happens when something's put on that you don't, is there ever a stop where someone's stuff doesn't get looked at? Like, by time? Like, I don't know. Let's say you're running till, like, 11:00 PM.
We've done it.
It just keeps on going?
Yep.
Yeah, what I, what I tend to do in those cases, I'll limit some time, especially for new ones.
Okay.
So I'll take a look at the agenda once it's built out with Evan, and then I'll take a look to see if we need to limit time on topics like the 133 or things like that.
Okay.
All right.
Motion to continue on the mall?
Yep.
I move that we grant the motion to continue on the Chelmsford Mall to November 12th.
A second.
Motion by Mike, second by Sarita. All in favor?
It's my only chance.
Aye. And it must continue to November 12th.
I can book to make that.
I know, I get to vote.
You know, for the 22nd, we could always send out for pizza.
Great. I'll be on a cruise now.
All right. So we will go back to the SEOD applicability.
Are they waiting for anything?
Let me bring up my notes. So at the last meeting, there was some discussion about the applicability for the overlay, questions about how we should be looking at performance standards and the purpose and intent of the overlay itself, and how do we base our decision on applicability on that. We also had the letter from prior town council talking about how it would be good not, given our current regulations and overlay, it would be good not to have the denial at that point, but have it more of the discussion. Current town council, Evan got that information to current town council. He agrees with that. But then Evan and I had a further discussion about how do we then get to the point where the applicability is either a useful step in the process, or if we're just looking at early feedback, how do we change the process so it's not a decision on applicability that's essentially a rubber stamp? And so there are a couple different ways that we could go about doing this. The first one is if we wanted to, we could add information in our overlay, in 195, 119B, where we ask the applicant or require the applicant to provide a narrative of how the proposal would comply with the performance standards and purpose and intent of the overlay. And then also ask what relief is being sought through the overlay. So that way, we're getting feedback from them about what the benefits are, and we can see what they're asking for in terms of relief to make that trade-off. So we have a little bit more meat in our decision. Another thing that we could do that Evan and I talked about is if, so part of the discussion, I think, is less about the applicability in terms of the dimensional requirements, and more about the impact and benefits of the use being proposed on the overlay. I think in some areas, it's the use itself. In some areas, it's the combination of uses, like the Joel, the example that Joel brought up about the Beehive. My concern was the combination of those two uses in the proximity. I think the combination of uses in the North Road one was not a concern to people on the board, so it didn't get the same reaction. With the plumbing, I think it was the plumbing business project as well, there was only a single use, so it wasn't a combination. So I think if there is a concern with certain combinations of uses, like residential and more industrial-type uses, then we could either put combinations that are non-starters in the bylaw as a way of preventing those combinations of uses, or we could potentially add a line in the table that says the mix of uses in the overlay would trigger a special permit. And then we take it on a case-by-case basis. I think there are ups and downs to both. I think the special permit route allows a little bit more flexibility to the board. And I'm not sure that we would want to necessarily codify mixes of uses that we don't think go well together, because uses do change, and so it might be a little bit hard to even come up with those, those combinations. So that's what we were thinking. Thoughts on those approaches?
Sure. I think, and the first thing that you suggested there, I hit you, I think you hit the nail on the head. And I very much agree with what I think you're saying, which is we should be very careful about codifying the use mixes, because I really don't think we can fully anticipate all the possibilities. And, you know, it could be an industrial use and a residential use, and if the residential use were set up in a way that it was, you know, there wasn't going to be a million kids, well, maybe that's more acceptable. So, yeah, I think you got the program right.
Okay. Joel?
So were you, were you suggesting that we think about modifying the bylaw, or, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Because right now, it's, you need, in particular, though, 195, 119B1, the proposed type, size, and location, and adding, like, use, mix of uses or something like that?
Yeah. And I think we would add, we would do a couple of things, I think. We would add that the applicant must provide the narrative of how the proposed project complies with the performance standards and purpose and intent of the overlay, and also what relief is being sought. Those would be part of the packet that they would present to us. And then further on, we added a use in the use table, or a line in the use table, that any mix of the uses triggers a special permit. any mix of the uses triggers a special permit in that overlay.
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Yeah, I, I very much like the idea that the proponent presents the rationale.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's a really good idea. I, yeah, I'd think a little bit about actually adding a line in the use table, but maybe that's called for, I'm not sure.
Thoughts? John?
I like the part about making, having the project, the proponent, you know, just to do a narrative so that we can see clearly what's being sought for relief and that, or how the SEAD would benefit. And then, as far as I do agree with them, I think it's going to be very hard to anticipate future uses, so I, I would support doing a special permit, having the board review, you know, if, if it's, if, you know, for certain uses, so we can make a determination whether it's beneficial or not.
Anita?
Yeah. I agree.
Okay. Sarita?
I like the more information with the mixed-use special permit, but I, what happens in future, like, so, they get a special permit for mixed use, and one of those uses goes away. Do they have to come back for another permit, or they're still approved?
If, if my memory serves me, if it's the same use, it remains approved. If it's a change in use, it would have to come back.
So, if they have approval for two, one goes away, they'd have to come back?
If they have approval for, say, a residential and contractor yard, take the Beehive, and the contractor yard changes to another contractor yard, they would be fine.
That's fine. Yep.
If it changes to another use, they would have to come back.
I was thinking more like it stops using that altogether, now you just have one use.
I don't think that would trigger.
No, that wouldn't.
That wouldn't, because it's still...
Because you don't know what would be coming in.
And then...
But that's the same, now, any special permit that we grant for a specific use stays with that use, and then if it is a new use down the road, they would come back again.
And where does the approval for the special permit come in compared to saying it's SEAD applicable? Before or after?
It would be after, right, Evan?
It'd be part of.
Or part of? Okay.
So, just keep in mind, any residential element within SEAD currently requires a special permit if it's four or more units for eight or new construction. I think what we're talking about here is going into the underlying use table, and anywhere in town, not just in SEAD, because if you're going to, if you're going to apply it only to SEAD, then you wouldn't put it in the use table, because there is no use table for SEAD.
Oh, that's right.
You go into the SEAD zoning bylaw. You could do both, but in SEAD, the residential automatically requires a special permit.
But if there's a mixed use in the SEAD, we don't have a...
So, when Beehive came in, the, the, the industrial component was a by right use, the residential was a special permit. And I think you need to figure out whether you want to, whether you're concerned about mix of uses applies just to the overlay, which applies to existing commercial and industrial. And again, an overlay means someone chooses to come in under the overlay. Currently, most of your underlying zoning districts don't explicitly prohibit or allow mixed uses, but there's a general provision in the bylaws in multiple sections that say, you, they say you can have multiple principal uses. So, by default, it appears as though someone could, could propose a mix of uses not using the SEAD overlay.
Involving residential? Like, say, a residential with a commercial?
Residential.
Multi-family. You're correct. So, yeah, the only way to get the multi-family.
And that's what makes SEAD unusual, because it has the residential.
Right, right. So, the best strategy is probably applying within the SEAD bylaw.
Yeah.
And not the use table.
Because that's also where we see most of the mixed use requ, coming to us anyway, is through the overlay.
Yeah, I mean, there was even some, if you recall, there was even some board members who expressed concern about, on Littleton Road, there was an office building.
Yeah, with the residential.
Yeah, it was commercial, it wasn't even industrial.
Right.
Yeah.
It was just commercial. So, it seems like there's enough, there's enough concern to warrant, you know, putting it in the bylaws explicitly.
So, it wouldn't be a, an additional line in the use table, because there is no use table, it would be a, just a line in the bylaws?
Correct.
To mention that any mix of uses would require...
Yeah, it could be under 195, 112, which is use regulations, or 195, 13, which is residential uses. You could do a 195, 13.5, kind of just slide it in as a new subsection, mixed uses.
Are people comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right.
Just one, just one question on that, just so I can wrap my head around it. So, you approve the special permit, and then that allows them to do the SEAD. You approve the SEAD applicability, and then they still have to do a permit?
You do it together.
Yeah, it'd be part of the same process.
The same thing. So, you could then deny, because you don't approve of the mixed use, and then thereby you're denying the SEAD applicability. I probably keep on saying it wrong.
Effectively.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on how, how detailed the, the new mixed-use provision is. It may, it may, it may create non-starters, you won't even see those types of projects. If there's some specificity to it, if it's just very generic and vague, and applies to any mixed use, then that would be reviewed as applicability. Then, then they'd apply for the special permit, do the full public hearing, full submission, and like any other project, the board would have, you know, make a decision.
Because I thought part of this problem with this one was by saying that we approve the applicability, they then come to us with a plan, and then we have issues with the plan, and then all of a sudden, we approve the applicability, so they think it's okay.
It's separate.
It's like a circle.
So, that's, yeah. I think, I think some members may have that concern, but if you look back at Beehive, at least to me, it was, they, they pretty clearly got the board's message. There were, there were a number of board members that expressed, you know, pretty strong perspectives on it. After they met with the board, they, they reconvened with, with the town officials, and then they never re-engaged with the board. So, while applicability, as two councils have now indicated, the way the bylaw is set up, you'd be granting positive applicability. Some of the previous decisions that I provided to the board, the way board members had, had dealt with that in the past, is some board members have voted against positive applicability, majority would vote for it, and others expressed specific concerns, and those were codified in the applicability decision. So, I think, I think generally speaking, applicants do get the message, and more often than not, they're not willing to take the risk to advance their project. And Beehive played out, played out that way.
Okay. But, I mean, I do, like, going back, though, I think what you're trying to do is good. I just want to make sure we still have something that you, it sounds like, no matter what, if we really didn't want it, we could still vote against, even with this suggestion, so this just adds to our ability to do things.
Yeah.
And I like the more information, I think it's really important, because when they come up here, seeing not even a head helps.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll start asking the applicants to provide that now. We won't wait until the, you have to go back to town meeting.
Okay.
So, procedurally, we're still having a separate applicability appearance versus a permit appearance, right? In other words, that's the way we do it now?
Yeah.
So, I assume, okay.
And Joel, I have your email from 2023 on other suggestions for the SEAD changes.
Whoa.
Yeah, I kept it.
I remembered it.
Part of it is performance standards, a couple other minor changes. So, what I can do is I can pull all this together after town meeting, and I can put the draft together for us to take a look at for spring town meeting. So, if everyone's agreeable with that, I can put that together, Evan can start talking to current applicants to provide that information, and we can move forward.
Sounds good.
Excellent.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on that topic before we move on? All right. So, we have discussions. Community Development Director's report.
Okay, brief report. We've already covered the upcoming items for October 22nd. We covered pre-town meeting. I received a new inquiry on Tembutterfield. That will likely appear before you in an informal fashion for a landscape contractor I handed out the Chumpsford Street concept vision. There's a survey that's out, seeking input, so I encourage you to take the survey and spread the word. Final update on my report is, we received feedback on the one-stop grant application. Unfortunately, that was not awarded. I'm in the process of scheduling a debrief session with the state to review the, you know, the comments and reasons why, so I will, you know, update the board accordingly on that. As far as the next steps on that, just a couple of suggestions. One is to try to keep the scope as-is, which is fairly robust, and find alternative funding sources. That could be a combination of town funding and maybe some other state funding. It could, could also include working with NIMCOG along with some town funding, but that, that current scope was estimated to be, you know, minimum about $100,000. The, the projects we do at NIMCOG are nowhere close to that. They're usually, you know, around 20, 25 with a, with a local match. The other option may be based upon some of the newer information that's been received, maybe going and amend the scope, revisit the scope. My hope is that there is a reconsideration process. I don't know if there is, but we'll, we'll inquire and find out.
Okay.
So, I expect to have that briefing within the next two weeks. That's all I have for you.
We'll talk about the managed growth strategy in a minute, but Evan, I had a question about the climate resilience and sustainability design guidelines. Is that still moving along and...
Yeah, so on Monday night, the select board awarded the contract, so Kleinfeldter has been notified to proceed. The next step will be scheduling a kickoff meeting with the, with the task force, and that should be within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Who are the planning board members of the task force? I don't remember.
I'm drawing a blank. Mike? You were in the interviews with Kleinfeldter.
Yep.
Who else was there? Deja?
Yeah, Deja. Okay. I couldn't remember.
Been a while.
It has. All right. Thank you. And then, any up, I'll wait for Joel's update, because I know the board of health met, so I'll ask him. All right, any, anything else for Evan? All right, Lee's on updates. Oh, yeah, Lee's on updates. We'll start with John today.
Just a reminder that, so, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments on NIMCOG has their annual meeting next Wednesday, October 15th, at the Chumpsford Center for the Arts at 5:30. Just to remind everyone, there's a couple of highlights. The Mass Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities Secretary Ed Augustus will be there giving a keynote address. Unfortunately, I will not be able to be there that night, because that's also the night of the town manager's pre-town meeting information session, which is a little later that evening, but that's at the senior center. But I would encourage anyone to attend that NIMCOG meeting. It sounds very interesting. And also, I believe, one of our representatives, Jim Acero, will be receiving an award and speaking there as well.
Anita?
I was at the ZVA. For the life of me, I can't remember. I'm trying to look at the agenda to remind myself, but one of the things that did come up was the fire station in, you know, Kate's Corner, if I'm not mistaken.
Wilton Road.
Yeah.
Or Acton Road.
Acton Road, thank you. And they want a very large variance, because it's going really close to the butter. It's like, coming from only five feet. I thought it was, like, it was right, went right to the edge. The butter actually came in and spoke in favor of allowing them.
Ow.
Yeah, and they did allow it. But it was a huge, like, wasn't like, oh, I need five, like, we're five feet over. It was like, it went all the way.
The building?
The building, yeah, like, went all the way to the line.
The snow's going to land right where the neighbors are.
Yeah. And the actual butter came in and, you know, spoke in favor of it. He's been working with the designer, the architect, you know, they've spoken with the fire, and he felt that they're in a good spot. I mean, obviously, if the one that's impacted the most isn't complaining against it, the town did look at other properties, looked, you know, at other configurations, to try, you know, it's a small parcel of land, right? And we're trying to build out for the next 50 years, like, this isn't something that we're trying to add in addition to for the next 10 years, right? Like, this is, it's going to do this, going to do it right. The butter felt that they were good neighbors, and that they would put in the appropriate...
Shielding.
Shielding for them. You know, there won't be any windows on that side, that kind of stuff, so...
Okay. Thanks. Sarita?
Nothing.
Marcy?
NIMCOG had their meeting Monday at the library for Chumpsford Street improvement plans, reached out to the neighborhoods, the businesses, on what people would like to see on Chumpsford Street, ways to improve it, make it more of a village feel, trying to put sawbacks in, whether bike lanes are needed, connecting the rail trail better. It was interesting for a while. They did have a bunch of different stations put up to get people's input in, and as Evan says, y'all got this, take the survey, spread it around. I think I saw this on the town's website, has this gone out on Facebook, the survey, too?
It's been posted on a couple of Facebook pages.
Okay.
We'll, we'll add it, we'll add throughout this.
All right.
Okay. Mike?
Absolutely nothing since our last meeting.
All right.
I didn't DA's with anybody.
Board of Health met last night. So, some interesting things. One, 133 Princeton, there was, I think they said, a 35,000 gallon drum that they pulled out from, that was buried there, and there was another thing underneath it, and they tested it, and their thing was fine. And then, actually, the 35,000 thing had stairs going onto it, so somebody was speculating that maybe it was like held coal or something in the old days. I don't know. But it's just interesting, you know, getting the backstory or other, other things going on at some of these properties that we're dealing with. There was a, they mentioned at 295 Acton Road that there is a PFAS that is there, that it's within 500 feet of a private well on Fort Proctor. It's an unknown source. So, I just thought it was of interest, whenever there's a PFAS occurrence in town, to have a sense of where it is, what's going on. I, I wasn't going to ask about the gap analysis, but they did tell me that at the end of October is where they expect to hear more from the consultant, where I think he would have a more concrete set of things to discuss with the directors, or town personnel first, and then sometime after that, going to the boards, potentially before going public. And so, I asked when that was. They, Donna didn't know exactly, but I just wanted to make sure it was after town meeting, so... So, it is. So, um, then also, I asked about Hildreth. On October first, they were due to have their report to DEP. She has not heard anything about that. So she would expect to hear something soon from DEP, but no one has approached, um, them about moving forward. And so there was, uh, so basically, it's in DEP's court still. And, um, that sort of thing. And then also two forty-two that we approved, uh, was before them. And there, they were requesting that they do some soil testing, particularly related to the septic area. Uh, the concern there being potentially what was dumped into the septic. So the applicant agreed to that. And that, um, overall, and they were willing to, uh, they had already agreed to not require a geo hydro study. Uh, and so the applicant's able to move forward with that. So overall, it was a very productive meeting. And, um, Evan made some comments in general during the two forty-two about the process in general. But, uh, they were particularly seeking input on the two forty-two. And, uh, so that, uh, so that, that resolved, so.
Question on the gap analysis. What? Is it going to be recommendations that are going to be presented to us? Or? Because we haven't really given any input.
Well, if you recall, and I, and I did confirm this with, with, uh, Donna Greenwood, the director, the public health director, that the sort of the, the genesis of this was the concern about the GPZ, the ground protection zone, that the Board of Health is administering. And in particular, one of the questions being the criteria by which they say certain things have to be done, like geo hydro studies, soils testings, and things like that, which was one of the issues that Evan was bringing up. And so, um, so, so it sort of became, sort of grew to, you know, seeing, okay, well, there's multiple bodies involved with accurate protection. And so trying to work out, you know, some sort of approach that's consistent across town, across the different groups, and so forth and so on. And so that's ultimately where, you know, I, I would think that what they would be doing is coming to us with potential recommendations that we would have input on. I mean, we did provide our inputs already, right? And so that, that's what I, but I don't actually know.
And that's kind of my question is, I'm, I'm assuming they'd come to us with recommendations to each board about, this is where we think, um, Board of Health could be strengthened, Planning Board could be strengthened, CONCOM. But then there's got to be some dialogue about, well, that's not really how we work. This is more in CONCOM space, or something like that, I guess?
I mean, it's not hard to imagine, for example, that they would come to us and say, well, what we're going to plan to do is, you know, in the cases of an applicant, where it's not, say, a resident adding a garage or something like that, but it's a new construction, or if it's a industrial, commercial kind of thing, then that they were going to require a certain level of testing. And that that then may mean that certain things that we would ask on the accurate protection have already, actually already been potentially answered from the process that if they're going through the Board of Health first, you know? And so that would be, or if we're a situation where we, they're before both of us, then, which has already happened in our case, that we were definitely willing to let the Board of Health pursue the environmental testing aspect, particularly because they have the teeth for that and we don't.
Right.
And so, you know, but I, I would imagine it's just a matter of coordinating on those things to sort of agree, okay, you know, they're going to, you're going to do this, so we'll, you know, we'll do this in respect to that and that sort of thing. Be the kind of discussion I imagine we have.
Okay.
Don't really know, though. We'll see what we see.
Thanks. Should be interesting. All right, um, for myself, uh, no CONCOM meeting, uh, this week. Uh, October is staggered between the two, so next week is CONCOM. I do have an update for you all on the zoning articles. I did present it to Select Board and FinCom. Uh, the Select Board unanimously, um, supported all of our articles. Uh, there was one person absent. FinCom supported all of them, um, unanimously, except for Kate's Corner. Uh, that vote was six to one.
Was it just Kate's Corner, or was it six to one? I thought it was, it was, it was the two, it was the zoning and Kate's Corner.
Nope, you voted in favor of the zoning. I thought so too, until I watched the video again. I believe it, I believe it was six to one on Kate's, and then unanimous on the rest.
Did they give a reason?
Anita?
Hold on, I'm just going to look up the thing. Hold on, hold on, I just got text.
I was trying to help you before you go to town meeting.
So the, um, yes, Steve, I believe, um, he lives in that area. And his concern is that, so his view of, of zoning is, um, we want to make it, uh, ideal for what it should be in the future. Um, one of the things that myself and, uh, uh, Jim Clancy pointed out is that, while that's true, you can't change the zoning so that the current use is essentially prohibited and reduce the, um, the, uh, property value, um, and the opportunities for that to sell. So you have to kind of balance the future and what's currently there, and kind of make stepwise improvements over time. If you were planning everything from scratch, it'd be different. But because we've got to work with the areas that are current, the uses that are currently there, it takes a little bit more time. So he wanted things to go further, and he felt that, that, um, that current zoning, um, in Kate's Corner would be still detrimental to the neighborhood.
So he wanted it to go beyond what you were trying to do?
He didn't want industrial in there.
Gotcha.
Like, you wanted...
No, he wanted no manufacturing in there at all.
No manufacturing, period. Which, I think, like, I, I had said, like, you guys remember when they first came here? Like, yeah, I was, I would have wanted residential as well, right? Like, we all would have wanted that whole area to be residential.
And again, if we were zoning from scratch, it probably would have been residential.
You know, we wouldn't have put this office building there.
Do you think you're going to get other people during town meeting that are going to say similar?
Probably.
But it'll be the same response that we can't, um, decrease the, the property values of current landowners by changing the zoning on them, under their feet.
I just hope that person that came here and spoke in favor of it.
Has anyone reached out, like, to? Has anyone reached out to them? Because he had a couple people, he said he would try to get to go. Evan, did he ever contact back? It was the guy with the mills, right?
Yeah.
All right. Managed growth strategy. John, Mike, do you have any updates?
No, other than we're going to try to get together either phone or in person this weekend and try to get, uh, see where we want to go for the first meeting.
Okay, sounds good. And I guess we'll continue the path forward. And then we'll see what happens with the grants reevaluation. I think at the very least, we can look at a NIMCOG option, and see what we can do with what we've got in terms of scope, while still trying to keep to the original intent.
Could it almost be phased if you only got so much, you do piece and then do piece later?
Yep. Okay, anything else on managed growth strategy? All right, any other topics before we get to meeting minutes? All right. Meeting minutes, uh, for July twenty-third. Has everyone read them?
Indeed.
Any changes or edits?
Move to approve the minutes of July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. All right, so as we mentioned, the next meeting date is October twenty-second, right in the middle of town meeting week.
Oh, goodie.
Yeah.
And isn't that the night of the, uh, of the session? Traditionally, that, that Wednesday night has also been the...
No, next Wednesday is prep. Yeah, next Wednesday is the prep session.
Oh, they've actually moved it around a little bit.
No, it's always the week before.
The springtime, you guys had something you all ran to.
Yeah, typically, it falls, sometimes it falls, so, sometimes our meeting falls that Wednesday, sometimes it falls within...
We've had more than a few planning board meetings that...
Yeah, I think last year it fell right at the prep meeting. This year, it falls the week after.
It was funny, because my other half was there for his first time, and he's like, your whole planning board's here.
And I'll be there again, uh, next week. All right, um, so I'll take a motion.
What time were you thinking of making that? Because I, I'm going to be in, um, Boston during the day. So if it could be seven instead of six-thirty, that would make it a little bit easier. My daughter's defending her thesis, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, exciting.
Any concerns with making it seven?
Um, which day?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
It's a long day.
It's going to be a long night, but yeah.
Okay. Seven o'clock it is on the twenty-second. All right, I will take a motion.
At the risk of having made every single motion tonight, I think, I'm adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.